Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council meeting. If you have an order, please sign up at your cell phone. City of Anamos, City Council agenda regular session, Monday, November 10, 2025, 6:00 PM, Anamos Library Learning Center. One point zero roll.
Here.
Here.
Wyler.
Here.
Danceman.
Here.
Bobber.
Here.
Our council members are present. Our council members are remote. In point zero, what will be?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Point zero, agenda review in a three. There are two items listed, private people, Bob, after which, how would you think you want to spend the votes you consent? Or if we then bring the two items up for a vote and a discussion, or possibly with the motion on the board. Item A, minutes from October twenty seven, twenty twenty five, regular session. Item B, third bill.
Move to approve consent.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Rich. Council discussion.
I have two questions. Under the local option tax under Fund One Twenty One, there was an outlet repair bill for two thousand and twenty-five dollars. What was the outlet and why is it so expensive? It's on page three of the under roads, bridges and sidewalks. Thanks Shane.
And Shane Brown's research, yeah, so Delancey fixed all the plugins on the, in the nodes. Here on Rusty and about ready to have a fire or a fusion. We did that free come and bust.
So this was not a single outlet, it was?
Yeah, it was like fourteen, fifteen.
Okay, right, that, that makes more sense. Thank you for that. And then, uh, under the, uh, Fund One Twenty Two, the local option tax, the police department vehicle equipment lease, which vehicle is that? And is that paying off a lease then? Which vehicle? Okay. So do we owe any money on any current police cars? Thank you.
So with that question, wasn't there in those vehicles, wasn't the equipment inside leased? So we still own those leases, don't we?
Um, just wait, we are going.
Okay, good.
Once again, with the vehicle license, it's, um, it's not clean, but it was carried out.
Because those were for eight years and the vehicle worth of five.
Are we? I know it'll be coming up in budget, but are we anticipating getting any new vehicles for the police department in the fiscal year? Okay. Thank you.
I've got a question on the water fund and maybe Steve can answer the question. It's for Derek Young, property management. Do we ever take other bids?
Steve, I guess, so just pretend we, we have not. Jeremiah.
Okay, thank you.
That was, uh, also knowing the guidance by what it will continue with Jeremiah. I thought one time we had some internal discussion that we maybe possibly have that work done in-house. Do we have a review? What?
No, Eric, because that is private service lines that are being fixed. So we're staying out of that portion. We've had the conversation before. And that's something I don't want to get into because we don't have to have a trade supervisor. And all the manpower and stuff like that, but we're attached as years and nothing is current. And we're not licensed plumbers to do certified.
But you're licensed to fix the water, do you?
You need the water, man.
Close. Good shot, two thousand dollars.
But that gets the whole time project in the games.
Um. Maybe we what we need to tell them.
Well, it's, we just pay it upfront and then it gets filed to the property owner because we went through the whole process of ninety days, Karen. And for them, sending them letters, sending them notices to get their own curb stop replaced. And then this is the last ditch effort. They did not fix their surface stop and see can't get the water shut off. So then we hired different individuals in the time that I've been here to go in and fix the curb stop and then it's done. It's their bill. If they don't pay it, then I just put on their bill.
Well, we got a pretty big difference on because we have Jason.
Yes.
Probably Tom, let's call him either of the two items. Danny, would you drop the logo?
Yes.
Wyler.
Yes.
Danceman.
Yes.
Bobber.
Yes.
Yes.
Consent motion carries. Four point zero, public hearings. Four point one, public hearings. Public hearing has moved plan and specifications in award contracts with L and Hickory Sanctuary Sewer Rehabilitation Project. Item A, mayor opens a public hearing. This time the public hearing has spoken. Proceeding for discussion. Anyone in the public that would, um, feel like to me as big as wise as things going to be polling at this time, say it to me. Being mayor, closing the public hearing, public hearing is now closed. Four point two, resolution twenty forty-five dash eighty-one, approved plans and specifications and sub bids and award contract for the home and Hickory Sanctuary Sewer Rehabilitation Project. I'm identifying the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty-one.
Second.
The rich second.
Did it? I would, I would answer this.
It's coming out of part of my budgets. But I have to.
What's, what's this going to do to your budget? New change, right?
It's just coming out of the twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six budget?
Coming out of.
This current.
Coming out of current.
So I have question, and I certainly am not an engineer or in the press in the business of bidding out projects, but recently we've been talking about compaction testing and some other things and I'm a little confused in the three proposals that were submitted. There is a difference between the low bid of a hundred dollars and the high bid being seven thousand for trench compaction testing. Third line item in these bids. Low bid for the project is the one that has the hundred dollar uh, cost for compaction testing. High bid has seven thousand dollars for compaction testing. How can there be that much difference in that the bid? That just doesn't make sense to me. And I don't want to have six months into a project, someone coming back saying, well, we bid it at a hundred, but we're going to do a change order because we need three thousand dollars for it. So I guess that's my question. How do we? How do we compare these bids when there's that much difference?
Um, so yeah, that's a good point. And with these long some items, you can't exactly tell whether they're bringing the money. Some of them are giving no rehabilitation whenever you have some items. So they're required to follow the project or do that. So regardless of what they did put out on some amount, they have to follow the spec and you have the compaction. So how they get away with mobile and certain mid items, I mean, that's kind of how they play the big game. The same, the same for bid item number two, replacing the material, things either way they're.
Penny. Well, and same thing with topsoil onset, the first three line items are vastly different in, and my, my and I understand that there's a game that needs to be played. Um, but as long as I have some assurance that if I commit to voting for the bid that's recommended, that that bid is what it is and we're not going to be visiting it in three months and we're going to overshoot that bid by five thousand dollars because if that's the case, I might as well go with the second highest bid. So I I just wanted on record that I asked the question about, about why there's, I mean, that's just absurd. The first three line items on these bids. They're worthless to me because that, that is, that, that range doesn't make any sense to me, but as long as there's some backside protection for the city that if they decide that the compaction bid that they did at a hundred dollars doesn't come back and all of a sudden they come in and say, well, it actually cost us seven, that we're going to be on the hook for it.
Also along some items, they can do that. And with the other ones, like unseparable material, if there was a big quantity change, you could just say we're not doing it, we're not replacing that. And they, they are required to dig what their enterprise along with that point. That shouldn't be an issue. Um. I will say that the engineers estimated cost for this was just over thirty dollars. What's in there? So we're not concerned that they didn't understand the scope of the word or that they're weighed off or anything like that. They just put their money in other data that, you know, I asked when you were a little bit less.
Okay.
Overall, I think, I wouldn't be concerned with that. I, I do agree that, you know, the one penny, the big yard, those kinds of things. That's just how they do it sometimes.
Thank you.
Uh, of all of those three items. Bob. May I mention? Will there be inspections done? That the metal requirements are being that when we will, we do not.
That's a big question.
The intention for this project, we try to save and pause on that. Can chain myself, we would be doing the daily inspection to make sure that everything is there's only a short stretch that they're actually estimating for this to get the sewer out around the garage instead of going to the big, the biggest ticket I ask for the liars.
I appreciate it, doesn't it? Uh, although it just gives you a slight for biblical heartburn, you know, and that such a low dollar amount was itemized. And along with council on the line, I would like to have some reassurance that it will do that, that means if it's a significant task with those inspections, they, I would appreciate if they are heard and they are not overlooked and not covered up because in that space, I still get it done right. Sure. Not saying those are any more or less important than any other inspections, but they've already been like down on market levels. Probably.
Can we ever do third party inspections as far as compaction of team services or tear con?
So within this, did you put in like a ten percent contingency or anything like that, or is this it? Twenty, two hundred and twenty-two thousand? Or there's no contingencies?
I mean, the replacement of unusable backdoor material is which is why sometimes they will do a dollar or any, I can be guaranteed that they're based on that. And but if it is, we hold them to that another. So there are some um, bid items in here that even our new contingency, maybe we can get away with a small quantity.
Also, this is only stuff. Public comment? Danny, please conduct the roll.
Wyler.
Yes.
Danceman.
No.
Bobber.
Yes.
Trump.
Yes.
Danceman.
Yes.
Motion to approve plan and specifications accepted or contract carries with all favorable votes and one day alone. Four point three, public hearing, public hearing on development agreement with Rumble Properties LLC. Item A, mayor opens a public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Proceeding for discussion. From being mayor's votes in public hearing, public hearing is now closed. Four point four, resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty-two, resolution approving development agreement with Rumble Properties LLC authorizing the annual appropriation, backs increment payments and bugging certain facts, increment revenues to the payment of the agreement. entertain a motion? Make the motion.
Second.
In separate time, council discussion. Public comment? Danny, please conduct the roll.
Danceman.
Yes.
Bobber.
Yes.
Trump.
Yes.
Danceman.
Yes.
Wyler.
Yes.
Motion to approve, version forty-five dash eighty-three carries. Four point five, public hearing, public hearing on development agreement with Shaw Properties LLC. Item A, mayor opens a public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Proceeding for inspection. And being mayor folks, public hearing, public hearing is now closed. Four point six, resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty-three. Resolution approving development agreement with Shaw Properties LLC, authorizing annual appropriation, backs increment payments on bugging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement.
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty-three.
Second.
Dan, second by Rich. Talk to the discussion. Public comment? Danny, please.
Bobber.
Yes.
Trump.
Yes.
Danceman.
Yes.
Wyler.
Yes.
Danceman.
Yes.
Resolution forty twenty-five eighty-three carries. Five, five point zero, council watch, five point one, public status update, comprehensive plan, recent. Uh, talking about, we did the email with something back in it. And that was then back, it was drafted, it didn't give me a little bit more attention. Not formatted, so we took the time and tried a little bit, wrapped it and put on your tables tonight. But as I said, you know, there is keeping specifically capital well to see soon rather than later. Um, we just let you know when we're going to focus on. It's the one. Um, mostly what he provided, uh, after the package was created was, uh, some survey and responses towards. The committee that was established, the voice, not the missing players of the group. Um, we need to, you know, through the commission, through suffer, taking up stuff. Council, anything? The public have any comment? Five point two, resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty-four, authorizing senior clerk to make necessary bond transfers of some to close all existing accounts and staff the shield accounts for this one year's long sentence.
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty-four.
Second.
You know, this second by Brooke. Council discussion. Public comment? Danny, please.
Danceman.
Yes.
Wyler.
Yes.
Danceman.
Yes.
Trump.
Yes.
Bobber.
Yes.
Motion, resolution twenty forty-five eight dash eighty-four carries. Five point three, extension possible action, grabbing study proposal that Highway sixty-four, Jager Drive, H M. Uh, yeah, I received an email here from Melissa. Uh, this was the result of the last discussion, sorry. Uh, some of the relatives going on out there. I think where we are going to get rid of this, I mean, estimate for the cross table, do whatever. Kind of comprehensive capital analysis. I guess. Just kind of feel on the council, see what everybody thinks. It's just something that the public drive. They're into the budget. There, um, I want to see if that.
So just, just tonight, I witnessed a near collision out there at that wonderful intersection. So is the proposal that is being put forth tonight? I, it's for potential future development, but that does not fix the current anticipated development and the traffic issue that's out there that I have tried to work through my head, how we're going to be able to manage in, in, incoming and outgoing traffic out of two different basically convenience stores and or Tyson's parking lot out there and I don't, I don't see it. Every day there's a near crash out there because people don't use turn signals or they don't. They just come through the intersection and immediately try to take a turn and I don't see that improving with the, the proposed two convenience stores uh, using that same roadway. I don't, I don't know how that's going to work. So not sure a future development, um, study out there, it seems to me that the study needs to be done before we, before we go forward with the current development. And I'm not against developing property, but I am a hundred percent against adding more congestion and more bad traffic flow that already exists. I see it every single day, every day. Uh, coming home from work, going out on a Saturday morning to the pharmacy to get medication. That, that intersection is a very poorly developed intersection and we're just going to, we're going to buy ourselves more problems out there if we don't address address the issue before more development goes on out there. I'm going to have a police chief that's going to have one car that's going to be stuck out just taking traffic reports and writing up accident reports.
As of the end of the day, uh, current development is being required to have a traffic study. Um, and council will have to make a decision and play a prudent development. So, um, if there's, if the belief is that there will be a problem investment, the council has the power in the world to define the plans being proposed for development.
We see.
Being asking is we would want to take initiative to pay for these, these traffic analysis that is uh, currently the responsibility well versed in pay, but they have a certain site plan threshold, believe me. Do we want to take that obligation on ourselves and do it, or do we just want to continue that up there and we are to make the plan for it?
Well, let me ask you this, this study. What total area is this going to take into account?
What, what? I agree. Um, this would take in the area between Iowa sixty-four. So it will go all the way north to the next intersection. The next left turning intersection. So we include all nine of those access.
So it would go north of Macalir?
It, that is Macalir, Chamber four is Macalir.
Okay.
But it's not going to take into account anything on sixty-four?
So we would be collecting really traffic volume speed measurements along this corridor within the central area. Um, but we would also be traffic modeling and analysis for Chamber Drive intersections and I was sixty-four intersections with Chamber, Randor and.
So it would go down to Hamilton?
We could, and I think that's what this discussion is for, is to see what area of all assets. And then taking to expand beyond what was included in here. I just, I went to our track again to ask and share your concern to the last meeting. Ask what they recommend to the council. So we look at that existing, being the thing that you mentioned.
And, and I.
As well as any future may present recommendations for what those future access or restrictions we don't.
And I appreciate you taking the discussion from last meeting and getting this before us today. So I do appreciate that. My issue is we already have a business being developed at the old McAdos. That, that's underway. They're basically just getting ready to put a pump in and open the, open the gates, basically. And then we have this, the old Tyson's store. And so the traffic studies that those two businesses or at least the one that's, that's interested in the Tyson's property. They've already undertaken or are obligated to do a traffic study, correct? For the Tyson's. Or quick, quick start. I'm sorry, I, the old Tyson's building. So that traffic study or, or they then take that information to planning and zoning and then we get it after planning and zoning. Is that how this functions? So I appreciate the idea that we would do a future study, but those things are already underway. And so I'm not sure what the benefit of future studies for anything north of those, because we already know that those we already know that sun stop or whatever is going to be in the old McAdos. That apparently has already gone through planning and zoning and been approved. And now we're talking about the potential of the Quickstar property already in that process. So those ships have sort of left port at this point. And so having a future study telling us that we've got a lot of traffic flow through there, I, I don't need to have a study to tell me that. I live in that neighborhood. I, I know what it is every day. I, I know what it is every day that I leave to go to work and every day that I come home. So I don't need to spend sixteen thousand dollars to tell me we've got a lot of traffic. What I'm trying to say is what are we going to do with the existing two properties that we know are being developed or potentially being developed? We're not fixing anything in that hundred yards of, of roadway from sixty four to the main Tyson's entrance, which is on the north side of Sun Stop. That area is I don't know how we don't have more accidents in there, quite frankly, but that's the area that I'm concerned with. Whatever happened to north of there? We're going to need to know that down the road, but we need to be able to figure out what we're going to do with the traffic flow right now.
This for clarification, neither one have been approved and they will go with seven or four councils.
As long as we have that opportunity, then I'll let it go for the time being, but I don't. That is a, a significant concern to me.
When you say neither one has been approved, you're talking Quick Star and?
And they're both still going through the process. They both reached out roughly at the same time. We rest at various, various through, um, submitting different information and details, but, um, like the traffic study being conducted on the, um, uh, they start property.
Has planning and zoning been made aware that this is a concern? Okay. Thank you.
Well, my concern. You know, that's about a concern, but my concern is too is with these development here and going forward, what's that traffic going to do coming off of one fifty one and on sixty four? If we're narrowing everything down to two lanes? No, but going out it is and there's still going to be traffic. So my concern is what that's going to do to that traffic flow? Coming into town.
That's what we've already.
Right, but you were looking at it as today. Not the future.
I will ask.
Okay. Because that, that's kind of a concern if I don't know what Quick Star is going to do if they're going to have a truck stop type scenario. So you're going to have big semis coming in? If it's just going to be gas, I don't know what they're doing. But if we're having more semis flowing through there, how's that impacting everything else?
Current site and.
Okay. But I, I do know when you're traveling north and you're coming down at that stoplight, that gets real tricky with traffic turning left, turning right, coming straight across. We may need to take a look at the timing of those lights. Um, the links of them.
Probably needs to be a turn lane for them right there to ru- turn right. So that we can, you know, because you get stopped like you're saying, you're waiting, everybody's waiting.
What, what would be ideal there is that first inner, that first entrance into the parking lot to McDonald's and Subway and all of that, that is south of Maccados. That needs to be an exit lane only onto Chamber and the entrance to Tyson's and McDonald's and everything else needs to be the entrance to the north of Sunstrom. That because it is a nightmare, particularly if you have people coming from out of town that don't know that there's a second entrance. And people not using their turn signal and immediately turning to the left in that first intersection for people coming off of sixty four or one fifty one.
I mean, um, bringing this back over to the meeting as well, you know, we did, um, giving quest. I mean, something similar to that actual by the thought on next week's, um, to leaving, um, that's just not changing.
Yes.
To slide, see what happened, but I also wanted to get with the journey to see if it's, uh, that was maybe. Simply weird thought and, um, that was proceeding, so. Don't want to keep on his beats, it's not a legit legend, when you're doing that.
Thanks, Jeremiah.
Just, and the first bottom, um, this traffic study really. And would also recommend Shane considering the access point, doing this as it was today, with the advantage of knowing that.
The traffic study required by. West side, west entrance.
Do we have access to their?
Their traffic. I don't have the, the lives in there, but I made, and it's been submitted to the UNT. And I hear the UNT as well. So hopefully that. I think you're nice also.
We, we heard you mentioned that we've been sunstruck for what you're site plan.
I believe I should issue with a free access point. And based on. I should. So that is something I dare not ask.
Does, just curious, does the DOT actually come out and look at the intersection or do they just take?
They have, they do. They do track it every year, so they base it on.
Thank you.
When the examiner, please listen.
I would like more information.
More information if you would like. If that was serving means about.
No, more information about what's already been done, what Quick Star data shows. I don't see the value in duplication.
And, and Sun Stop or whatever the new place is going to be called, have they done a study as well then? Yeah, I guess I'd like to see what the study looks like that Quick Star has done, because I'd like to know if that includes any information, knowing that right directly across the street from them is going to be another similar type store. So there's there's got to be over, or there's got to be information that is consistent with both. But I think spending sixteen thousand or so at the moment is not wise if we're, if we've already got a couple of other studies or at least one other study haven't been done.
Well, I'm, I'm kind of curious what their studies are going to show since how are they going to predict the traffic that they're going to be getting? So I don't know that their studies will be one hundred percent accurate, but even this say in a future study, there's still development that could be done out there on Chamber and further out that could impact this in the future. So it's going to have to be very comprehensive to be worth the money.
Right, because they're going to be guessing at what's being developed out there.
Correct.
So the immediate issue is you're going to have a lot of volume of traffic going in and out of gas stations, but if you're just putting up a construction business as a home base north of there, but not having any regular and consistent traffic, the traffic study for that is going to be shot in the dark at best.
Thank you. Five point four, renew approved master services agreement renewal city engineer.
Does that require a motion?
Yes.
I'll move to approve the master service agreement run renewal, uh, city engineer H R Green.
So good.
Public comment.
Wyther?
Yes.
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 Tomber?
Yes. Yes.
Motion to approve the agreement legal hearings. Five point five, renew the foods instead of Jenny, they request stolen seventeen thousand, six hundred and thirty, six dollars, one cent. There are seven items listed, I'll read all seven items off. After which council can make a motion that includes consent, which will bring all seven items up for discussion. Send the bill, report out to the board, make a motion on any of the individual item. Item A, the H R grade amount four hundred fifteen dollars twenty cents for water G I S service. Item B, H R green in the amount of four hundred fifty two dollars, dollars and cents for streets G I S service. Item C, the H R green in the amount of five hundred eighty eight dollars, twenty five cents for planning and zoning G I S services. Item D, the H R green in the amount of three hundred eighty seven dollars, seventy five cents for third street sidewalk extension project. Item E, the H R green with an amount of three thirty seven dollars, fifty cents for any of the most sidewalk programs. Item F, from H R green in the amount of one thousand seven hundred ninety dollars for engineering services, master services agreement. Item G, from W R H Inc. in the amount of thirteen thousand nine hundred sixty five dollars for the water wastewater treatment, plant load equalization base and.
Move to approve consent.
Second.
Motion on any second time. Officer discussion. Public comment. Bailey?
Davisman?
Yes.
Yes.
Tomber?
Yes.
Danson?
Yes.
Wyther?
Yes.
Set motion for failure plus here is six point zero city administration. Uh, just one item, I know. Our own. Save them all day, uh, city offices. Seven point three, air council report, seven point one, mayor's report. Seven point two, council reports.
I had, um, my monthly EMS meetings last Thursday night, um, briefly, um, all of the committee or all of the different service boards and communication boards that fall under that um, are falling subject to our legislation in Des Moines and to put it lightly, we're going, we're being requested to do more with less in, uh, those uh, commissions. I did, uh, want to let you know, and I don't understand the budget process all that well with regard to how it works with our city funds, but I will tell you that the city of Anamosa's contribution to just the dispatch uh, employees um, through the EMS department, uh, in fiscal year twenty twenty six, it's projected that city of Anamosa's contribution to that um, to those positions is a hundred and eighty three thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. And in fiscal year twenty twenty seven, they're expecting it to go up to a hundred and ninety seven thousand, six hundred and seventy two dollars. So that's how some of our money is going from city into, uh, the communications and dispatch, uh, division. I would also say that it appears that the board of supervisors have um, they're instituting basically a zero percent increase in their budget uh, items other than personnel for next fiscal year. So, um, that is kind of a precursor to, I suspect, what our budget discussions will be, but, um, things are getting tight all over for all of the different governmental agencies that we're dealing with. Uh, second thing is, I guess I see our two newest council member electees and our current incumbent, congratulations on um, last week's elections result. Look forward to working with the two new folks and we'll look forward to continuing to work with you, Kay.